Okay, welcome to the town of Belgrade Planning Board meeting for February second, two thousand twenty-three. We'll bring the meeting to order and the first order of business will be to do a roll call of who is present. So we'll do the planning board members first and the CEO, then make sure we get the names. People attending in the audience. So so just say, I guess here, so Rich Baker.
Alternate here.
Alternate here. So Sarah Langgett.
Here.
Yeah, Peter Rushden here.
George Steele.
Craig Alexander, CEO, Konzer and Susan. And folks in the audience, if you don't mind, please project and because this one there.
Sure. John Sorensen with Summit Ridge Energy.
Chris Otten with Summit Ridge Energy.
Chris.
Karen Moody with Sand Tech Consulting.
Karen.
And and online now we have Leslie Elder.
Fantastic. Okay, so for our agenda, the new business we have, we have a pre-application discussion with John and Chris. And Nate Carey, you and supported that. Yeah. You for that same thing. Okay, so let's let's have that discussion. So what can we do?
Great. So hi, everybody. Thanks for being here. Glad we appreciate it. Thanks for putting us on the agenda. With Summit Ridge Energy, we started developing this project. Actually, it was an acquisition. So it was a long road. A few years ago, they started to develop the solar projects. Carrie, you have a schematic that shows where it is. And so one of our areas is concerned, we want to show you what we had proposed. And kind of talk through it. And then you passed a new ordinance or law or what do you call it?
Ordinance.
It's an ordinance. So I had it right.
Yep.
A new ordinance would make it the way this is designed, very difficult to come to fruition. So you know, one of our questions is, what would it take or what can we do to work with you, work with the town to make something amenable to your new provisions, your new ordinance? You want to explain how it's set up?
I mean, it's it's a little tough to have this on two sheets. So they're kind of like overlap.
Would it help? We got an easel?
About like that. Well, it's just kind of the two sheets.
We can't help it. Put down on the side.
Yes.
Are I mean, are any of you not familiar with the project?
This is.
I'm not.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so south of Burton Woods Road off of Oakland Road.
We just help you with click it a whole person and get closer to the.
Sure.
Sure. So you.
See, this is the national area where you're.
So we will go there and then we'll move that way. Yeah, so. Just about there.
Yeah, but it it's in a more like.
Yeah.
Oh, I can see. Yeah. The other lines match up in those lines.
Want to put it here?
Yeah.
A little tricky. We we have no mouth.
Yeah. I did a little like that or we need to get around that one side.
There we go. So. That's good. So.
So this is a this is the array here. Oakland Road is over here. So the access to project be down here on the southern end. It's over a few few parcels. It's a it's a tracker style project. That's how it's designed in this drawing here. So it means that the the solar panels are mounted on a tracking system and it slowly rotates throughout the day. So instead of your fixed tilt panels that are installed, just face things south and never move. These are more like on the east-west axis and they they follow the sun throughout the day. It's about a five megawatt project. The total like fenced area, well, or the total clearing area is around like sixty-seven-ish acres. And the fence area is a little less than that. So.
Well, I'm sorry. I didn't quite hear that.
Uh, the total like clearing area is around sixty-seven acres. Yeah, the fenced area is less. I don't know. It might be right on that plan, but.
And that's all wooded now.
Yeah, there it is. Thirty-seven acres fenced area.
That's all wooded now.
Yeah, it's.
That's correct.
Forested. It has been, the parts of the the project area have been harvested for timber in the past, but it is all all forested. Mixed kind of mixed woods. And we did, you know, wetland and water body delineations out there. So you can see like these blue. Blueish polygons on the figure are the wetland areas. So there is a a little bit of wetland impact. That one in the inside array there. And the project is currently still under review with DEP. So we filed two two applications with DEP, one for the wetland impacts and then the site law permit. Just due to the size of the project. So and under the site law permit application, DEP looks at, you know, I'm sure some of you are familiar with the process, but everything from, you know, sound to decommissioning to stormwater and it's like twenty-six sections of the application that they they review. So that's sort of the basics of the project. I think I mentioned it was five megawatts.
The other issue is we asked Cara to do a site analysis, right? Remember a few people, whether it could be seen or not.
Yeah, we do. What we do is view shed analysis. As part of the site law application, it's sort of a standard thing because that's another one of those sections that they're looking at is aesthetics and visibility essentially. So as part of the the site law application, we did a view shed analysis. And we came to Belgrade in November of twenty twenty-one. Um, it's hard to believe it's twenty twenty-three.
Well, they all combined with COVID. They just combined as well.
Yeah, so so we came and did our public info meeting as again, part of the site law process. It's something that needs to happen. So we presented to the town in November twenty twenty-one. We came back, I know, per request in in March of twenty twenty-two and did another public info session. And and in in those sessions, what we were hearing from the people that that came and spoke were a lot of concerns about visibility. Of course, there's two major lakes nearby. So worries of, you know, will it be seen from the lake? And the view shed analysis that we did as part of the site law application shows no visibility from me from the lakes, but we we did further analysis. We heard from the members of the public, some concern over Foster Point Road, which is sort of like down this way from the project area. And so we did a line of sight analysis from Foster Point Road and determined there they wouldn't be able to see it from there either, just due to topography and existing vegetation. Just kind of the, you know, where this, the elevation of this project in relation to Foster Point Road. So so we have continued to do some some studies just to try to alleviate some concerns that we were hearing. So.
Can I ask, can someone record view shit analysis you guys perform? Was that, what time of the year was that?
Well, so a view shed analysis is is all done on a desk, a desktop. So it's a program that you run that I I don't do them, so I'm not going to explain it super well, but take into account topography, the height of the solar panels and then tree cover. So typically, we just assume a forty-foot tree height, which is pretty conservative for Maine. So we use lidar data and, you know, just kind of did all digital data to do those view shed analyses. And then the line of sight that I was talking about on Foster Point Road, that was done in November, like Chris.
Yes, it was November.
Yeah, so.
When I and I did that, I put that request in with Chris and Carl because Dan Newman and I talked and he expressed that area of concern.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, which is the main road here that has the access?
Right here. So this is Oakland.
And then the road that takes then is, which was the name of the road?
What's road is like north of the project, probably, I don't know, somewhere up in this vicinity. This is just like Boater Drive is somewhere somewhere right along here, but this is just the proposed access. So it's not a current, it's not an actual road right now.
Yeah. Is that where you're planning to have the utility lines as well?
Uh, yes, that is where the point, yeah, the point of interconnection would be. So the line goes underground. So it runs like underground, basically all all through the array. Follows the access road underground and then pops up to the overhead rate at the interconnection. So there'd be like four, five holes right there where it ties into the existing line on Oakland Road.
So the 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 proposed solar farm will be between Burton Road and what would be the next road? After that access road.
Well, the main, like the next like major road is quite a ways south.
But the the whole thing is closer to Burton Road.
Yeah, yeah.
Burton Road on the side end of it. Okay, kind of.
Well, Bert, yeah, Burton Woods Road is like, I would say, I don't know, a few hundred feet, probably north of the project area. Yeah, so we did have some members of the Burton Woods Road Association that came to our public info meeting in November. And then have they have also been in touch with the DEP project manager for this project. Great.
Do you have a timetable for from DEP on when they anticipate?
Yeah, our timetable was July of twenty twenty-two that they would have a permit. So they're a few months behind. So no, I don't have anything more up to date than that. They are slammed as you've probably heard and I've not gotten any updates from the project manager on timing other than we're busy.
Both the state and the utility and of course, I can away from our. The queues are massive, not just for here, right? Throughout the way.
And do you already have a contract with CNP?
No, we do not have our interconnection agreement. Yeah.
Correct.
We do. We do. Yeah, okay, we do have our.
That's no.
That is.
Make state bureau so you look good.
But it's a good point. So I guess the biggest question is, as this is presented, would be difficult to do this under the new ordinance?
How so?
Well, number one, just the amount of clearing acreage. I believe, if I recall.
Yes.
Yeah, because we know more than ten acres.
Just to give you guys some information, typically, one megawatt is five acres. So two megawatts, ten acres. So this is a five-megawatt project, AC, seven-megawatt DC. So anyway, long story short, it would need a bigger site. So that's an issue. Then you have setback related issues in there as well that would make this difficult.
Which setbacks are are problematic in your view?
Uh, the what?
Once we read it, it's a small.
Yeah, sure. So there's two setbacks. One is, I think it's two hundred fifty feet or it could be a hundred fifty feet from the property line. We're actually under lease option with multiple landowners right now. So the project is actually crossing parcel lines. So it's not clear to us that that would need to be broken up based on the way the ordinance is trapped. And then the other one is about, I don't know, maybe call it five hundred feet north of the property. There is a deer wintering habitat, and I believe one of the ordinance provisions is it can't be within thirteen hundred feet if I'm not mistaken.
Thirteen or twenty.
Yeah, exactly.
Quarter mile.
And ticket to plan is to purchase the properties.
For a long-term lease. Long-term lease. Yeah, I think we're working with four different lenders, a combination of lease and purchase.
How long a lease would you be?
Typically, it's the way they're drafted is twenty years and then we have three, five-year renewal options at our discretion.
Because in our ordinance, that'd be more than half because in our ordinance, to show title right and interest has to be a minimum of ten years.
Okay, good answer. Yeah. Thank you.
I think the real question is, the ordinance says ten acres. I'm not sure there's anything that would permit planning boards to do anything different.
Yeah, I mean, it would be a dimensional requirement in my view. And and so we don't have the authority to issue waivers, issue variances. Right? Only Board of Appeals do, just like any other municipality in Maine. And and so as a consequence, the only option would be if you if you insisted on on this site, the would be in that amount of clearing, you know, of deforestation, the would be to go to the Board of Appeals with a variance request, try to show undue hardship.
Okay, that's the criteria.
Yeah, it's a pretty high bar.
Sure.
Of course, you know, defined it pretty well. It's a pretty high bar.
It is defined fairly well.
Yeah.
Now, that's option one, A, our preference. How about if we there are surrounding parcels, like across the street, where there is a some land and I don't know, I don't want, that's already cleared. Already been cleared. So there's no clearing. It's roughly seventeen, eighteen, ninety, twenty acres. And there's a lot of, forgive me for my candor, junk.
Junkyard.
It is.
Am I allowed to say that?
Yeah.
All right.
It's a junkyard.
All right.
There are people watching.
Yeah, everybody knows about it.
Okay, that's why I was trying to be tactful.
Even a was even a site that was considered for the state Superfund program.
Correct. But we understand what you're saying.
Okay, so that site, which is not the most eye appealing site.
Okay, that's good.
Fair?
Yeah.
Okay, but there is about seventeen or eighteen acres. Maybe, again, work a portion of this and a portion of that and maybe do two projects together. Still may not be able to achieve our five, but maybe we can do two and a half, two, two and a half on each, try to accommodate that. But there still is a concern, even on that other side, when you and I looked at it, maybe.
Well, we'd still be within the deer wintering.
Deer wintering. Yeah, it's about seven hundred feet from the deer. By the way, you can come to my house in Boxer, Massachusetts, and you see deer every single day. I mean, it's nuts. My backyard yesterday.
Yeah. Again, you know, that's a dimensional standard, performance standard. And so we don't have any authority whatsoever to issue variance to that. The the only, the authority, the wiggle room authority that we have is we can issue waivers to some requirements, not dimensional ones necessarily, but or all dimensional ones. But I think the ordinance speaks to, you know, unique site conditions or where you can basically achieve the goal of the ordinance by an alternate means. So I I don't know what it would be for a dairy yard, a deer wintering area, but but you know, I can't think of a good example at the moment.
So in the context of trees, maybe if we were to get approval to remove more than those the ten acres of trees, could we plant trees to supplement that? Is that a?
Are you seeing the offset?
Well, yeah. Some, I'd take ten. If there's somewhere in the town that needed them, I'm not sure, but is that that type supplemental approach, something that would be considered?
I don't know. I don't know because I I don't. I don't know how that plays into the appeals process. I I think the appeal, I I've never been on the appeals board, so.
Sure.
But the unfortunately, the one member of our board that has is not here to me, but and I'll speak up if you know differently or better, but the I'm not sure they look at any more than the criteria that are in the ordinance. And that that is specific to that undue hardship standard that all towns have to go by in the state. And.
Real tough one on that undue hardship was my end in question. We're not able to reasonable return without.
Yeah.
And if you put a house on it.
Yeah.
Generally, the court.
Or subdivision or or log it for that matter. That's considered a reasonable return.
Now, when you were talking about the option B, were you thinking of you know, you're talking about twenty-seven or whatever acres on one side, were you contemplating on the this side that reducing that to ten acres and if you did something like that, that would take the ten acre issue away.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's what you were saying.
Yes and no. The yes is we would reduce the size. But the area of concern is again, the way their ordinance is written, it's just some of these setback related issues. But declaring would be significantly less instead of taking out fifty acres of wooded lots, maybe it's twenty-five. But I still think there would have to be some flexibility. Go ahead. Yeah, I was just gonna say, I don't know if this is possible now, but you know, hypothetically, if we could speak to that landlord and they were amenable to us building there and we only removed, call it five acres in that parcel. Then hypothetically, we were within compliance with the rest of the ordinance and then we only moved, removed ten acres across the street where we were originally proposing, submitted two applications is because they're on different parcels with that. Yeah, but you're still dealing with how many?
One thing.
How much would you clear here? Ten acres?
Yeah.
Yeah. And then we would remove maybe five across the street hypothetically. So it's fifteen total. So it's sort of outside the.
And I don't think you'd have to move five across the street. It's gonna be normal.
Yeah, we have to, we have to look into it. But would the two application approach be allowable under the the provisions?
I I don't think that would be, I'm thinking the same owner personally, same project, I'm not sure if considered.
Yeah. I I don't know the answer to that without, you know, maybe getting seeking some legal advice from our town attorney, but our town ordinance is different than the site law in that there's no what's the term, common scheme of development.
Yeah, that's.
The legal concept that that operates under and and we don't have anything similar built into into this ordinance nor do I am I aware that other towns do, but where it would dictate that you'd have, you know, file one, one application for the entire project. And maybe that you, it's up to you, you know, do you want to file one or do you want to file two and and but.
Well, there is a.
I I don't know the answer. I personally don't know the answer to that question.
There is a consistent landowner on both.
Yeah, and and maybe it's a legality that we didn't, while developing the ordinance, we didn't even talk about. What we consider. So I, that's the reason I don't know the answer. I don't know. Maybe somebody else does, but.
Right. And that that particular condition was not part of our consideration when drafting this part of the ordinance. So I would say seeking legal advice would be on our end.
I don't think there's anything in the ordinance that would prohibit it.
Right.
Which is so we're established to be allowed, so they can take that whole parcel and from what I'm understanding, make three different permits. I mean, that's all right. Can't do that. That's the whole project, ten acres each permit. I mean, that's a big mess up, but that's the case.
Let's see. Yeah, you're saying like they could essentially, okay, we're in a big permit, ten acres.
Yeah.
Ten acres.
Seven projects.
Outside of this spirit of the. That's why. I don't know, I say in spirit, but technically, the way that's written, you could do that, right? Because there's three parcels, one, two, three, and you could clear ten, twenty, thirty. Is there a side by side?
Well, my question is, would these lot lines running through the middle of your, in there? If they were to lease all those parcels, do those lot lines disappear because it's all under the same lease holder? And that changes the setback. It's a good point versus them purchasing it, erasing.
Yeah.
I don't know if it would change the parcel lines about another town laws work, but like we still, you know, in this section, we're paying lease rent to one landlord and then this section.
Have to deal with the setback from the lot lines.
Yes, that absolutely, yeah, that would be something we'd have to adjust in the design.
That's. That's the word, too. It's a lot later.
So.
What's it said again?
That that would eliminate a lease option. You have to purchase. Create your own lot.
And then meet setbacks from there. Sarah, you had a question?
So, yeah, the.
Oh, I see.
So I understand the ordinance. If you would just do ten at a time, that means you got to do it in setbacks. You said the setbacks every time. I don't think that we.
Certainly not comparable now. I mean, we.
Yeah, you would.
These can continuously.
You would, you know, chew up more land in setbacks that way.
Yes. But if we acquire everything under the ordinance, we'd only get ten acres of clearance.
I look at you guys and I'm trying to park. This excites me. My bathroom is sensible. And this is a great thing for me. It's beautiful. It's absolutely laid out. It's nicely nicely. It's just, it's it's just too bad that the ordinance would not really kind of accommodate that as it is right now. Now, the concept of developing a site that is not eye appealing. I don't know how further you can go in exploring that. This is already, as you said, is all open, already clear and caught.
Yeah, the one, the, no, the one that's not eye appealing is of the seventeen acres, probably fourteen of it are already.
That's that's up by the road. So you'd have to do a planting. You would have to do the visual thing up there as well. You wouldn't, you could only see a portion. What is it? Twenty percent, ten percent?
I think it's twenty percent.
We decided on that from the road. So that it happened, take care of all that as well. Yeah, I don't really.
The aim of this project is to to be able to facilitate the total filing of megawatts.
That's the ideal scenario. Yeah, so we have to pay about, regardless of the size at this point, about a million dollars to CNP for them to upgrade their lines. And that's going to hold even if we shrink the system size. So as we shrink, the economics get harder. And there's a point at which it's just too small to make the economics work.
You want your ambition, we all, I heard you put away in the project. There's no vision that in the next year, you guys will have a technology, technology breakthrough where instead of needing fifty acres, you would need half of that.
I hope so. I mean, the the module efficiencies and wattages keep going up. I'm not sure next year we'll get to that point, but maybe in the next twenty. I think that's down the road.
Yeah.
I used, I I breaks my heart that I can see all the manpower that I'm placing this and then if you guys can hold up in DEP then this thing probably have a chance to survive.
Well, I mean, there there are a lot of benefits to the, to doing projects like this. Number one, if you are concerned about climate, climate change, then obviously this is a system that's renewable energy. So now we're using the sun. And the second thing is it's nice tax incentive for the town. So the town gets revenue. So, you know, that's a benefit. Third thing, of course, if we decided to use the unappealing land, I think solar is a lot more appealing than a junkyard. So so there are a lot of attributes associated with this. But, you know, when you guys, obviously, when you brainstorm on this, tightened it up a lot, made it a little bit more difficult to do a project, at least in this size.
Correct.
Yeah.
Craig.
Can't really see the junkyard anymore. So I'm growing up. It's gone. It's there, but it's gone.
Or even the trees around it.
Yeah, the only thing I, I mean, this is getting way ahead of ourselves, but that's a site, like I said, that has had some minimal level of investigation by DEP for. Has had some minimal level of investigation by D E P for. Uh, petroleum that has this waste contamination, uh, this was quite some time ago, you know, maybe they concluded ultimately that there aren't any risk factors there. But you wanna think about that seriously.
The unappealing one?
Yes, we would do a phase one and we'd have to get all the.
Probably a phase one would be adequate there, you already know the junkyard there.
Yes. Yeah, the 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 concern is we we have to get clearance on the phase one to get the insurance in case. Issue there, so for our lenders, all the, they call them racks renewable, um. Sorry, forgetting the term, um.
Just said it.
Anyways, they're called racks, oh, uh, environmental concerns, um, anyways. Um, we have to get them all resolved before any lender, uh, major lender or industry would.
Um, we were talking earlier about waivers, um. You know, this isn't, isn't a decision by any means, but one potential area where the waiver criteria in the. In in the ordinance, which is on page fifteen, if you want to study it later, um. Might apply is the, what the concept you brought up earlier, that this is a project made up of multiple parcels of land, so. It may be that a waiver could be entertained. Since it's all part of the uh, same project. You know, rather than individual hundred fifty foot buffers from. Where you're gonna control or have title right or interest to to the land on both sides of that property line. That may be, you know, I I'm just, you know, speaking out of turn here, but. But but that's the kind of thing that I think the ordinance is vision where it may not, a requirement may not be applicable to a specific project.
Yeah, typically, we wouldn't see like a setback, a lot lines setback applying to internal lot lines.
Right.
Right, so that's what we would consider, obviously, these lot lines running through here would be internal lot lines, spell part of the.
Contrast the the setbacks from a a residence would be more rigid. You know, we wouldn't have much flexibility.
Right, right.
Yes, that's section seven, page fifteen, that's where the waivers part starts.
Within the new ordinance or within the Dakota?
By the way, just in the way of back. General background, yeah, we've had a real problem with getting the pages numbered and table contents, and so this is. This is the version that was approved by voters, but you'll see that it doesn't have the seal of signature and. All the official stuff and doesn't, and um, they gotta do some e- editing, somehow that. You'll see the formatting in the solar sections all screwed up, um, but um. They being the town office, um, the uh. What are they gonna say? Oh, um, an important concept. If you don't understand and any other applicant understand is the soul or the section that's exclusive to solar. Is a supplement to the rest of the ordinance, so the rest of the ordinance also applies and it's the more stringent of the two that. So for example, stormwater runoff, we didn't deal with it all in the solar, you may have noticed. Because we had a stand, another standalone section for storm water and. If D E P should approve your stormwater plan, we can accept that. Uh, rather than having you to jump through the hoops that are in in the ordinance, which are a little different. I mean, we're basically in that case to uh, defer to D E P's technical expertise, and we're not stormwater experts by any means. We don't have access to either.
Right.
Out of curiosity, um, I don't know the genesis of it, but the thirteen hundred, approximately thirteen hundred feet. Um, setback from deer wintering habitats, uh, what was the logic behind that?
That that came from guy inland fish and wildlife guidelines that they developed for the P U C specifically for solar projects.
Interesting. Yeah, we took that verbatim from them.
Yeah.
And because you wouldn't oftentimes think of a number like thirteen, was it thirteen twenty? I was like, what the heck was that? And then it was like, oh, multiply by four, yeah, quarter mile, so that's what it was.
You should point out, um, that standard is the same standard for, uh, the setback from a subdivision from a dairy yard as well. So it's it's uh, consistent.
Right, I just wanna make sure to to reiterate what George just said, a a lot of our effort. When we did this revision to the commercial development review ordinance was to look for ways to be consistent with other ordinances. And so we tried to find ways to do that where we could, and that was one of them.
Okay, and a waiver on something like that?
Well, that's a dimensional requirement again, and so.
We don't have that authority.
So that would go border appeals as well? How long is the board of appeals process typically?
No, they can't.
Oh, so you like present an application and then you deny it and then you go to the board of appeals?
Correct.
Count on, you know. Two months for with the, with us, dancing with us and and then, uh. So even the board of appeals process really is dependent. On the complexity of the issue before them, is my impression, I mean, would there. Not that many things go to the board of appeals, although it seems like a, not this past year, but in past years, there had been a fair number and. And um, i- it's a very more, um. Rigid process, I mean, the town attorney is there advising them at every step. Uh, it's, um, and, um, and in terms of time limit, I. I have no idea, it it months.
Also, the board of appeals, one of the criteria is that the hardship was not created by the landlord. In essence, he's trading on hardship.
Yeah, I I I don't.
By trying to put something where you know.
Interesting.
So now there's four criteria to study them.
Yeah, um, it's built, that also was spelled out in the ordinance, under the appeals board section.
So, if you were us, what would you do?
I'd go looking for another site.
That'd be the bottom line.
A smaller site, a smaller project, probably, I mean, if you wanted to be in Belgrade, you know, uh, I mean, this ordinance. Was developed with, uh, on sort of the basis, I mean, it was a. Negotiation process, okay, and a hard negotiation process, so it's very much a compromise, but, um. You know, my take on, uh, what. You know, the select board wanted, what a lot of the populace wanted, what this board wanted was to. Not rule out solar development in Belgrade, but. Uh, to have appropriately sized, not large industrial scale development here. If it, if that's, if that's even feasible, um, and, um. So, and and not to, uh, to avoid basically some of your predecessors. You know, like the, like the the site up in Farmington or some of the sites in Augusta where, you know, they they stand out like sore thumbs. Um, and or the site in Waterville, like, you know, just paid a hundred twenty five thousand dollar penalty to D E P for soil erosion problems. Uh, I'm not sure where exactly Waterville it is, I don't think it's, I don't think it's Colton's project, no, it's a, it's a bigger one. By the airport, yeah. So it's like with any other kind of commercial or industrial or, um, development, I mean, our. And others can correct me if I want, if they feel the need, but at least my view has always been, this ordinance has been based on. Um, not prohibiting it, but mitigating the worst of the environmental aesthetic and other potential impacts on the community and. And the lakes and the environment in general, but, uh, I mean, in some respects, it's not. In philosophy, not different, that much different than the site law, it's just that we use different standards. All towns do, and in some respects, we're more stringent than the site law and other respects, we're less stringent.
So I would say it's a good summary, you know, thi- this particular project, as I understand it. Is hamstrung according to our ordinance because of the the amount of, um. Uh, vegetated or wooded, uh, uh, area where you propose to have the solar. Part, um, if, as you stated, you know, our ordinance says. Not more than, not clearing more than ten acres of of that wooded area to do it. So therefore, that puts an emphasis on already having open land for places where where it could work eas- more easily. Right, right, so if you if you don't have to go on wooded and then clear ten acres, you go on non wooded. And not have to clear that, then if everything else were equal, you would have met that standard already, right, so. Anyways, I I think, I think the summary that you provided was a good one, is is really based on, on, um. A lot of hard negotiations and compromise and trying to come up with best fit that the. Town of Belgrade, uh, would be able to to look at it from an ordinance perspective, except.
One thing, uh, you discussed earlier was the visual impact analysis that you're done for D E P purposes and. We actually looked at the standards that they have under the Natural Resources Protection Act. Um, simply because it was one of the few things we could find that had any meat on it and the bones and, um. And so we incorporated some of the concepts of that here, but we became, we did, we were a little bit more specific, as Craig. Mentioned in terms of so that we had a, so once, to avoid, um. Inconsistent decision making on our part from project to project, um. And it sounds like this would not be an issue, but, um, um. On the lakes anyway, which we would consider a viewpoint, but, um. For example, uh, our standard is eighty percent, uh, obscuring the project by eighty percent rather than. D E P doesn't even say.
There's no adverse effect.
Yeah, right, whatever that means, I mean, in a board like this where the membership changes. You know, that could mean one thing one year and something entirely different the next year.
Right.
And we were trying to avoid that, or at least minimize it to the maximum extent. And in fact, we had, um, a visual impact expert come and meet with us to help us a little bit. Um, I can't remember the landscape company now from Yarmouth, but.
With only shops in in town, they're, they do a lot of our. Yep.
And, um, and that was helpful and and, um, you know, look, obviously looked at what other towns, particularly towns that are lakes communities. Cause that's how we, you know, that's, that's what Belgrade is, right, we see ourselves different than Augusta or Waterville or Oakland even. Uh, even though Oakland's sort of.
Much less commercial, much less industry.
Yeah, and and a lakes, I mean, that that's the goal, the goose that lays the golden egg in this town.
Yeah, yeah, we got that. I'm from Camden, I know the drill.
We actually looked at Camden's ordinance, I mean, they don't really, their ordinance, their basic commercial zoning ordinance is interesting because it prohibits all. Commercial development above five hundred feet.
Yeah.
Of elevation. Which would so well.
Right.
So can I ask you guys something? What, what, uh, this is a gem of project, it's beautiful.
We agree. That's why we wanted to do it.
So what, what attracted you to Belgrade?
Um, well, so the genesis of this project is we acquired the rights to it about a year ago from a company called Longwood Energy. Um, and they, they're one, they're a major developer in Maine, they're doing, I think, a larger solar project in Maine, I'm not sure what town it said. Um, they were the ones who originally developed it and typically you're looking for two things, you're looking for available land, first and foremost, landlords actually want all these to land that. And also are you in close proximity to a three phase electrical line and a substation? Because the closer you are to the substation, the cheaper the upgrades are that you're gonna have to pay for. Those are typically the two primary, I mean, it's much more involved and we get Karen involved to look at wetlands and environmental impacts and all that, but those are the two primary things you will get.
Same position to the circle, right? This has it.
Thank you, it's very insightful.
Sure, well, thank you.
All right, well, thank you. Um, any final comments you wanna?
No, actually, I was just gonna ask if you had more questions for us about the ordinance, because, um. To be honest with you, you're, you know, you're the first people who have approached us, so. It's one thing to write ordinance, it's another one, another thing to implement, right?
Well, it would have been, even if we've gotten the green light from. C N P, you, we have an I A for get everything, uh, finished with that by southern England and of course the D E P. Still would have to come back here, right? Um, with this new order, for sure. So, um, that's why we're here.
Well, and and the fact that, you know, the town had a moratorium kind of speaks to, you know, um. Where the residents of this town are coming from, you know, right, um, uh, I think, um. Um, there, my sense is that, like I said before, they're not opposed to solar development. Uh, across the board, but, um. Uh, some of the large scale developments that might be in the inorganized townships probably wouldn't be a good fit here. Um, and, um, and I think that's where people are coming from. Um, the, um. I mean, different towns, you know, we we met, we had a representative from Reedfield, town of Reedfield, who also, they had a solar ordinance before we did. And they took a different approach on, on, um, a very different approach by prohibiting, uh, development warrant of. Let's see, can only develop twenty percent of the lot. And we were concerned that would have undue, um, unintended consequences. Uh, including, uh, I I mean, you know, Belgrade eventually is gonna be one big bedroom community is my view. And it's gonna be nothing but one big subdivision and, um. And that that day is not that far off.
To Augusta and Portland?
What's that?
To Augusta and Portland?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, and I don't know, you know, I I live next to a camp road and. It's amazing how many people have, you know, moved here from Southern Maine during the pandemic at least. Uh, and, um, and 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 a few from Boston, so, um, you know, whether that. Can persist, who knows, but, but, um, yeah, we're a bedroom community of Augusta and Waterville basically and. And, um, so if something isn't developed for solar, it might very well be developed for us as a subdivision and. At least speaking for myself, and I don't mean any offense to th- those in the room that have subdivisions, but, um, you know, I didn't wanna. I didn't want to, uh, uh, include something in the ordinance that would have the unintended consequence of promoting subdivision. I mean, both types of projects have impacts on the environment and and and, uh, you know, varying degrees and and. Some similarities, some differences, but, um. Um, and and, you know, to the tax base as well, and subdivisions generally don't pay for themselves. Um, in terms of the property taxes that they generate, particularly if their kids in it, but, um.
It was a refill that had zoning. So I wanted to make one sure you were aware of this, um, so we looked at several towns ordinances when we were trying to revise ours. And we fielded zoning, um, and outside of shoreline zoning in Belgrade, that's the only thing that's zoning in in first town. So, uh, part of our mindset and part of our calculation, in the absence of zoning, we had to come up with another mechanism to. To look at ways to mitigate impacts, our mechanism is to do it through this particular ordinance for these types of things. So I just wanted to make sure you you knew that, that's, um. We don't have zoning.
And it's, I understand it, this does not go down towards a, uh, close enough to the light that falls into the shoreline.
Rich, just wanted, uh, not to end on a sour note or whatever, but. Uh, I'm fairly familiar with the, in a sense, from what I gather of the discussion, and I agree with it, that. In order to build more than ten acres or clear more than ten acres, you need a variance, this is dimensional standard. And I'm fairly familiar with the variance criteria, the undue hardship, um, and. I just, uh, my feeling is the board of appeals, you can argue that I don't, I'm not. Getting all the information before making the decision, but, uh, my feeling is if the board of appeals. Acts under that definition strictly, uh, it'd be hard to be able to. Design a project or have a project. Be able to design a project or have a project that's more than ten acres uh, if it's based on the undue hardship, I just. Want you to know that when you leave that. Oh, to go get a variance, I don't think it's all that simple.
Oh, I think it's clear tonight that this process is not simple.
Right. And I did want to point out, re- regarding the Board of Appeals, uh, if you go to page sixteen on the ordinance.
Yep.
There's, that's where the stuff is.
Does.
For appeals, there is, so we want to make sure you knew that. Going into your, into your work.
Um. And then I guess back to the unappealing setting. Um. Since there's little clearance, clearing there, maybe there's a site that abuts it. Well, we could. Make that a little bit bigger. Do some clearing and the two combined. Could be a little bit bigger than. A one megawatt solar park.
Where is this deer wintering area? Would that be effective?
Does that check the maps um?
Here.
Yeah, I mean, I'd want to confirm, oftentimes the maps you look at online aren't necessarily perfectly accurate, so um, it's north of it, I think it's within thirteen hundred feet, but I double check.
On the same side of the highway?
No.
No.
Opposite side.
Opposite side, yeah.
So that helps. That helps. We, if we went that route, we'd obviously have to go through that process.
Anything else for us?
The only other thing I could mention, uh, we, I mentioned earlier, you know, differences between. Our ordinance and D P regulations, particularly under the site law, but also wetlands, um, our wetland, we focus mostly on the wetlands. Map by inland fish and wildlife, unless they're part of beginning with habitat. Or some, you know, has some unique plant in it or something like that, but uh, I'm guessing. That little wetland that you showed on there is probably not been mapped by the National Wetland.
No, 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 I don't, probably none of these have, yeah, I mean, so field field delineated wetlands.
Yeah, like I said, the exception would be is. You know, a fertile pool or, you know, some kind of unique habitat like that that um, been identified or mapped. Under you, inland fish and wildlife, uh, beginning with habitat. Mapping. Which I'm sure you're familiar with.
Yeah. Um, you know, I've been to a lot of planning board meetings over the last thirty years, I just want to say thank you, because this has been congenial, very nice communication back and forth. Not necessarily typical, so I really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you very much.
None of us are attorneys.
Yeah.
No, one of us are.
So much are very.
Nor are we.
I think this.
Yeah.
Please thank you. Please do. And I don't pretend to uh. Be one like sleeping at Holiday and Express, whatever that commercial is.
Oh, yeah.
He didn't pass the papers. Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
Very well.
We'll be back to you.
Okay, great. I want to encourage you to continue having frequent uh conversations with Hans about whatever it is you want to.
He's been great, I'm gonna give him an A plus.
Yeah, sure. He is, he is our guy.
Well, I can see why.
Very possible. We'll have a good night and safe travels wherever you have to go.
Thanks very much.
Yes.
Stay warm.
Yeah, stay warm. Just going to Portland.
All right, safe travels.
I'm a former local guy, I was born in Caribou.
Oh, really?
So this is nothing, this is nothing.
He's okay, raised in Camden.
Yeah.
What do you name?
All right, what year?
I was eighty-six.
Eighty-six, okay.
Yeah, I uh. I'm on boards up there still, on the engineering board and the business school board, so stayed active, we got my son up there finally. Four kids, finally I want to go.
Yeah.
So it's good.
Yeah, one son at.
Yeah, I do. It's hard, it's hard to convince this generation to stay local.
Well, it's not local for, I live uh, just north of Boston, so it's a four hour drive.
Uh, you, you boys want like to engineering probably?
Yeah, well, I had him in the construction engineering technology program, which is right seventeenth in the country, my dad.
I know.
Okay, I believe the blue.
Yeah.
Hey.
Yeah, and uh, we, but I, he just, he wouldn't do it. He had a hard time with physics, but I said, it's just, come on, you're coming out of COVID, you know, you're gonna get your group going again.
Yeah.
And now he's got into the business school, but I said, well, maybe you minor in construction engineering.
That's right.
Maybe we could do it that way, so I'm working it.
Ah.
Working it.
Working.
Uh, the engineering is the best value I should want. It it, and I'm, my background is engineering.
Yeah, and that program up there is far enough.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm biased, I went to U M A, U M A, U M A.
The two sons went there, they both were engineers.
Yeah.
I I I probably put in three, four of the kids.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, all from Massachusetts, could go up there.
Wow. They're awesome.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it. All right, thanks, everybody. I think it was a healthy discussion.
It was very impactful.
Yes, yes, it was. So we did the pre-application discussion with John Sorenson and Chris Austinis. Um, the next would be the solar ordinance inquiry from Ella.
They didn't show up. I invited them, I told them it's gonna be a good discussion, but she emailed. Um, she said she had wanted more information on it. Told her the ordinance was online, she is an intern with this Lord Ireland. And uh, I thought it would be a great benefit for them to attend, just to witness what just happened. Sure, and inject their own questions. But their loss.
Okay, all right, they may attend another one in the future. The check, check, yeah. So that's it for new business, and we go to old business, which is the planning board charter review. And then we approve the minutes um, or review and approve, then C E O update and the change, so. Where are we with the planning board charter reviews?
Well, Fonz has included the uh, response, we got into the town attorney. You know, boss here.
You're all copied and emailed, yes, so I'm assuming you reviewed it.
Didn't say that.
Yeah.
Yes, same time. Probably no addressing, I have an idea of direction.
Again, I'm not a legal legal, I don't want to try to understand everything well. But I kind of got the gist that we could still move forward, I don't know the. What we're doing, correct?
But we could um. We would have to um revise, I I, my take on it is we'd have to revise that charter that. Select board developed in ninety-one, to make it consistent with the law under which we're established. We would all have to go to five-year terms. And there might be some other changes needed as well.
Five-year standard terms, so.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure how that would happen, but um. Whether, how that could be phased in, if you will, because we all have three-year terms at the moment.
And that's the biggest sign language. With the charm issue.
I'm sorry.
And that's the biggest problem, is the charm issue?
Well, it's one of them, it, there's less flexibility in how we operate um. Um, but um, that's the one that stood out for me. Um, I I was, I actually uh. It was not easy to find, but I did eventually find it. Um, I found the the, a copy of the law. Actually, it was in the M M A planning board uh. Um. Manual and an appendix, um, I couldn't find it, I I I'm not savvy enough to know how to get stuff from the uh. Law library, but um, big law library, but um. So I'll just see if I can hit hit some of the highlights uh. I. I mean, what's similar is appointments are made by the select board term of. Um, municipal officer may not be a member or associate member, that's, that's true regardless uh. Um. It talks about associate members, which, you know, is a different way of saying alternate um. Um, I think the um. You know, it talks about when a uh alternate can vote and that, I don't think that's any different. Um. The board shall elect its own chairman and and secretary. Um. Um, and. See. Um, it spells out that um, forum is four members. So that's a little different, that's different.
Yeah, it would be, yeah. We've operated as three, three as a core.
Um. And then it. Makes it the planning board's uh responsibility to prepare and adopt the comprehensive plan for the town, so that's different. There's a whole section on that.
And this is the new, what the new step would be?
No, this is, this, yeah, this is the law that. It's like from the nineteen fifties or something like that, and it and it and it was repealed in nineteen seventy-one, about a year after we were.
Because we have a separate committee.
Yeah, right, well, and the town's always chosen, which I think is the right way to do it, it is. To involve as many people as possible, so that it's not just a small group of people doing it. Right?
This uh. I wonder how it would be difficult to get, I guess, but it would be. Interesting to me, anyway, I had a copy of the. Uh, model ordinance in the planning board manual um. I mean. I'm thinking my thoughts are gonna be probably where I think we gotta go is. Look at that and see whether that's something that'd be easy to adopt. Uh, or to bring to the people.
Right.
People that the town, people have to.
Yeah.
So um, I actually did um, just for my own edification, um, get, print out a copy of the, that sample from the M M A. Manual and um. Um. And there's actually two samples, one is just a basic. For a town that is starting from scratch, and that's a longer, you know, it isn't that long, it's like one and a half pages long ordinance. Fill in the blank, basically, you know, put your name in. And the other one is a shorter one, but it's. Intended for towns that already have a planning board and it, and the key thing that might need to be added together is language that. Talks about, uh, it says, uh, the members currently serving may continue to do so until the end of the term for which they were elected, appointed. Uh, taken both of office, so in other words, by going through that process, you're not giving us all the boot. Um. I mean, i- if he'd lie, what I could do is um, if if you, you know, so you'd have, everybody'd have an opportunity to look at these um. The uh, and and maybe the the old, the law that we're actually uh, uh, established under. Because that's the default.
The precedent word.
Yeah, uh, is um, or, excuse me, uh. Title thirty, uh, section four ninety, four nine five two.
Yeah.
Uh, the uh. And that way everybody have a chance to look at it, we can. Put it on the agenda again for next week and maybe, you know, decide where we want to go from here, there, or however you want to handle it. I mean, it'd be simple enough for me to um, leave these with Fonz and. And him to add it to the board agenda for, or the packet for next time.
Would that be good?
If we had.
We'll get it in an email beforehand, so you can read it.
What's that?
We'll get that in an email beforehand.
Yeah, yeah, so it would be part of the packet that we get, yeah. Exactly.
Right, I take it with me.
You know, I can go like copies, if you want a copy.
Well, no, in the package, fine, so I'll get to it before then.
I don't know.
Well, I think that'd be really good to be able to discuss it next time. Um, thank you, George, uh, for all that investigative work and research on that.
Well, it, you know, it it, Craig alluded to, it's sort of the next natural question to ask, you know. What's the law say that we're authorized under now, right, and what would it? Look like if we decided to change, you know, right, so you kind of have to look at it.
And so, so just looking ahead, if um. The the law that we're under. It actually talks about. Let's see, you can see a lot of that time, five members to associate with them for five years, so. Right, five years.
Yeah.
But we're operating as always three years.
Three years, yeah.
So I I don't know how the others feel, I would want to propose um, still the three-year term, not five. Um, I think it would be arduous um, and off putting, be very hard to get people to work here for five years.
Yeah, that that was my initial thought.
So I'm I'm just showing you my cards, that's what I would, I would want to. Advocate for, you know, I'd want to promote people to be involved as opposed to. Keeping them at arms length because it's such a, such a long term.
Yeah, that that would be my concern, that a five-year term would be a real deterrent to attracting people, right?
Well, no, if anybody in public service, I haven't won a four-year term. Well, I said I was doing six, but it's about powering together.
Do you recall, George, whether the model ordinance had said anything about comprehensive planning and uh.
Uh, I don't believe it does, I don't believe it does.
My thinking is that. One can argue with the planning board, we ought to be in charge of that comprehensive plan, but. I'm also taking that.
There's comfortable interest in that.
It should get people of the town involved in that with, that have an interest, specific interest, and we're busy enough. Without having to take on that project.
Correct.
No, it doesn't have anything specific about that that I I can see real quick, Rich, uh, I mean, I. I. Um. I don't know, if if we were tasked with putting, you know, if it all fell on our shoulders to do the next town comprehensive plan, I don't think we'd ever get done.
Right, no. Which might give us about three people resigning if they had to.
I know. Um, and and I only say that because of everything else that we have to do.
Right, yeah. Right.
It's not that I don't think we're capable enough, it's just, you know, realistically.
What would be kind of a, for me, would be a wedge, because you put in a, you're making the laws. And you're doing the processing too. So it's kind of, I don't, kind of, I mean.
It would be a slightly awkward position to be in. It could be viewed as biased.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I mean, the current comprehensive plan, I don't know how many people were involved, like thirty or thirty-five or something like that, yeah, with law. Then you had a steering committee in addition to subcommittees, and it took, what, two years along with the help of a consultant? So, you know, I, that, I don't know where we would find that kind of time, we wouldn't.
Um.
Yeah, I mean, to be part of it is one thing, but to have to lead is a whole different matter. So. But. We can talk about it. Sure, next time.
And and a question I have, um, looking forward to, the quorum part of four rather than three, is that an arbitrary thing, or is, do you think that that's? Set in by some standard or some law somewhere else?
Who knows, yeah, I mean, it's, like I said, that law was, I think, adopted in nineteen fifty-six or something like that.
Because it feels arbitrary to say.
Yeah.
Would be a, well.
A lot of stuff.
Right, right, yeah, yeah.
But it's, but it, um, yeah, I I have no way of knowing the the uh. Um. I don't know, maybe in the nineteen fifties, that was, you know, realistic.
Uh, yeah.
You know, we all have busy schedules, you know, um, not me, but some of you work, I mean, there's just a lot, you know.
Well, you know, nowadays, I would think a majority would be a quorum, so you have five. Well, you know, nowadays, I would think a majority would be a quorum. So, you know, five designated people, so three. If three of them show up, that's the majority.
Yeah.
And I hope the same way.
That's what I would.
It's a majority.
Yeah, right.
So whatever we do, we'll just try to incorporate that if we can.
I would like to.
Yeah, I agree, just so that. You know. Regardless of the reason, you know, we're conducting business as often as possible.
Yeah, right.
That would hurt applicants, among others.
It would, would. Nice. Thank you. We'll talk about this. Like more in depth next time. So put that on the agenda. That'd be awesome. And the next order of business would be to review and approve the previous minutes from January nineteenth. Do people have what what Katie did for us? And thank you for providing this.
I wasn't there, but I mean, I think it was a pretty good job.
He does, yeah. Very much appreciate the structure of the minutes and the. Really completeness of the.
Yeah, it's very professional.
Yeah, very. All set? Any edits? Or anything to to remark about, make comments?
I just have one. Nobody else. It's actually on second page, the CEO update. And. It under the shoreline zoning map and it isn't that what I think that. Caitlin is. Written here is. Incorrect. It's just, it's a matter of making sure the inference is correct. Because somebody reading this might get the wrong idea as to what we're. Doing in the context. So we're, first line, CEO Hans submitted the, rather than updated. Because that could imply that we made some kind of substantive changes. I would suggest replacing updated with corrected. Shoreline zoning map for approval by the planning board. And then I I would add a sentence, you know, we, again, our discussion probably didn't come right out and say this, but it was implied. I would suggest adding a line that says, no changes were made requiring voter approval.
Hmm, that's crystal clear. Because what we did was to. Right, was to take what was presented to us to have that printed. We weren't revising anything at that time.
Right.
That is the official map of the town.
And and the only thing that was changed was some. Things that aren't even part of the ordinance were removed.
Right, right, precisely. So that's, that's a very good point.
That's a good point.
Yeah. Thanks.
Rich, if you're reading this, a couple of years from now, we think that the planning board has decided it can make demands to the ordinance.
Right, without that, yeah. Anything from you? Rich, any edits or anything?
Oh, no.
Okay.
That that's meaning I was sitting in your chair. So I really don't look at any more changes.
Well, let's make sure that's noted.
Yeah. It's recorded, so there we go. The one thing I have to say is that on page two, under decision, it's a small spelling. Thing. So the line begins, cannot begin until the following requirements. I think we want to say are that.
Oh, yeah.
Rather than A, so it's very minor, but. All right. So that's it for for me for edits. Anything, you have else? If that's the case, entertain a motion.
Accept the manager, Jerry.
Minutes first.
So put a motion to us at the minute that they are with the corrections done tonight.
Oh, with the corrections done today. Okay.
I'm sorry.
In second, any more discussion? All those in favor, so Sarah?
Yes.
Yes, George?
Yes.
Frank? I too am in favor. We don't need to go to the alternate. So are you okay? So four in favor, none opposed. Perfect. Thank you. Next up would be CEO updates. Hans, what's going on?
Very busy. Week. Quiet. We do have a shoreline zoning application in the hopper connection. Ready to go. Got another one. Is, I've been trying to fly under the radar, but I caught it. Deverted to D E P.
Okay, great, thank you.
Put off quite a bit. I'm gonna make them do their. Or they were there first. They applied for a P D R for a foundation repair. Existing boat house type structure with a resident above it.
It's existing.
The foundation repair was approved by P D R, you know. And yes, they can do maintenance. They were gonna put up, I put a sandbag copper dam out. Not touching the shoreline or not altering the shoreline. So that's what came to me from D E P. Then come to find out, well, they want to tear down the house.
Oh.
And rebuild it. On top of this new foundation. Is that? You know, we don't have the overwater structure. I think that's a D E P. Section, section fifteen, paragraph C, we're not adopted by us. So being that there's five acres behind this whole structure. If they're gonna tear it down and rebuild it, they're supposed to move it back as far as easily possible. So rather than us. Arguable about it with the resident, we'll put D E P on first.
Okay, thank you.
Let's see what they said. They're probably gonna pump that down.
Yeah. Yeah.
First, because when they did the P D R, they didn't realize there was a structure going to be built.
Interesting.
I'm just getting everybody's eyes open.
Thanks, Hans.
The new one in Dollar General? I noticed they were clearing a lot.
No, they, they. The rumor is, is rumor. I don't know what's going on. The rumor among the abotters. I am, we are a barter too. Is they're doing that because they might put. Uh, storage units there. And I don't know that I have to go to a board. I have no idea about that.
So, Rich, they've already started land clearing on that.
Already clearing further back. It's making it more, more rectangular.
I don't know what we got to do to get people to understand that's part of the development. I mean, look at Kennebec, you know, boat, you know, they really screwed up when they did all that clearing in advance and before they came to the planning board.
So they're supposed to go to the planning board?
Oh, yeah. I mean, that's part of the development process. Yeah, courts have decided that multiple times.
I didn't want to get involved because it will be a C Y, but. I see, I, C I O. Of course, no, C Y, that's anyway, but but. I don't know, we probably didn't do the C E O to go on. Put a sticker there, you cannot do this.
So you're understanding this isn't a Dollar General, this is somebody else?
It's the same lot.
Right.
Okay. But. According to rumors in the area, the Dollar General. Dollar General deal fall apart. And they're thinking of putting. Self-contained source units. So the clearance started and people who come to this said. Do you get a permit for that? Said, I don't know, maybe they did that before I was in the, in the, in the board. And I know that that's not the case, but that's. They were in effect on things because, you see, I'm part of the, I'm part of the board, a body system. And coming here to dig anybody for it is. It really would not be my place.
Right.
There's somebody else going off. I mean, we never talked.
It does fall into the ordinance because more than likely, they're gonna have more than twelve hundred square feet of building. And and it's a lot that's not. Well, that's not true. Anyway, at least that.
Right now, the timber harvest still. Is that for that?
Are they, well, are they, is it truly a timber harvest or are they clearing land in in anticipation of development?
Well, that's, that's what the rumor, that's a rumor. That's what the rumor is. I'm not sure.
I mean, there's nothing to, you know, if somebody, a landowner is doing a timber harvest, but it's not part of a development, commercial development, there's nothing wrong with that at all. But if they're clearing land.
In anticipation.
Yeah, it falls under the definition of development.
Guy gets around it by saying, I'm going timber harvesting. Right in the back of his mind, he's. Planning something.
I mean, it it may be of no consequence. Except in the case like, you know, Kennebec. Boat there where, you know, they cleared trees they should have maintained for part of their vegetative screening. And so, and, you know, they're supposed to, they were supposed to planted that, replanted that, never did, but the. The. You know, maybe clearing back there doesn't matter a twit, but I just remember at one point we were talking about. Maybe even then Gary was here. On the, one of the issues with that site was that there was a wetland back there somewhere. I I don't know anything about the land myself, but.
I know there's a wetland between. Chandler Road and Sahana Road. So you at the corners of our, you have Carter's. Marine. And then the next lot over. The next two lots over in the back have wetlands and the the that lot is open. And somebody was missing around there and so the they got stopped. So wetland side here. But I'm not sure that that law, I'm talking about was wetlands. I used to want my my father-in-law, all of it, all that stretch. And then he saw.
Right, right. That makes sense. Yeah.
And so we know there's no wetlands there that I am aware of.
Yeah, I'm just repeating what.
Huh? You know, that property is still owned by Roger Billigan?
I think it is.
That's who originally owned it?
Yeah.
The old country or whatever.
And there used to be a sign there, future home. I don't know if it's still there.
Construction.
Of the. Storage.
Yeah.
Future home. I don't think that sign's there anymore.
Because that was approved under this ordinance. And but for a different use. So at a minimum, they'd have to come in for a change of use.
Also, she was, then probably I was writing, deflecting, maybe there was already. A permit. To do the clearing for use of that because that's.
Yeah, for storage or construction.
Yeah, yeah. And maybe they actually are.
Versus maybe instructors.
So how, again, how far away was that permit? I think that was probably about ten years ago.
Not longer than that, I think.
It was a while ago.
Yeah.
It was.
So that permit was still being.
Oh, yes. Well, I mean, obviously, the time limit has expired.
Well, they have been using it as storage of some sort, whether it be the soil or whatever, it's still storage.
Yeah, I guess.
Yeah, they have been using it for that.
Yeah.
It's been an active site.
Yeah, but anyway.
So the claim. They claim we're on the legal side of things then.
No, nor I. That was one. The. Yeah, I mean, there are two other storage. Units that have been approved under this ordinance. Maple. Whatever.
Their first.
Yeah. And the one down in the, down here in the gravel. Yeah, with Bill Wadley's and the one be behind the old town officer in the gravel pit. That was a.
Right, that's right.
I only know that because of the work I did for the comprehensive planning committee.
Well, I'm sorry I brought that question up.
Hans, I have a question for you. There's construction going on. It looks like a residential place. Going south of one thirty five. Just after, after you cross over the stream and south. You are, and there's a piece of land for sale, then just then there's a trailer, then there's another piece of land. What's the, do you know what the height of that? Home is? It just seems tall and it is stuck out when I was driving by. I'm like, wow, that seems tall. But I don't know.
I'll have to ask him for plans. I did go by there and inspect the septic. I did notice it was tall. He's got ten foot ceilings. And so if you go. Ten first floor, ten, well, he said nine second floor, but. There, whatever, you know, ten, ten. I think it's, what I estimated is peak, this. Quarter of another floor, you're look at thirty feet.
Where was this pier?
So when you're heading south on one thirty five.
Towards Manchester.
Towards Manchester, across the stream. Um, and there's a, I don't know, five or ten acre parcel, whatever, just on the left.
You grew horned?
Yep, yep, exactly. And then then there's another smaller lot with a trailer on it. And just after that, it is a. There's a property.
From the road, it looks tall because it is. Elevated.
Yeah.
As you drive in, you drive up and that makes a favorable septic form as well.
Oh, yeah, which I thought of.
And probably a basement that doesn't flood. Because it's pretty poor drainage in there.
It's on the slide.
Basement.
And it's one of those phone. Houses.
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. You familiar with?
U S C. Something like that. Some, not U S C, but some system like that where it's like Legos.
Yes.
Yeah, exactly. The plastic things and the porcelain in the middle and basically there was a.
Well, it seemed like a good project and everything, but it just, it seemed. Aw, and I I I just wanted to know if you.
Well, it's funny, I know, went to one through a couple of weekends ago on the way back, saw it because it sticks out. I mean, and. So I made a note. You know, have a look at it. Once you know, Monday, you got a phone call to come and spend seconds with them right there. So I was happy to go.
Yeah.
So what is the height on that? Thirty five.
Is that? And what ordinance is it that has a thirty five feet? It's other than shoreline zone.
Well, minimum.
Yeah.
And he's got. A lot.
It's got forty acres there.
I mean, it looks nice, and I'm not suggesting anything wrong, it just seemed tall.
Seems like.
I can ask him, but my my guess, cause I looked at it, it was thirty.
And if it's twelve, ten is twenty-two. And, um, your roof line says thirty feet.
If it was twelve, twelve, fifteen, I'd tell that, so you're at thirty-seven.
I bet the the basement's sorry, twelve feet tall, um. Um.
Yeah, I don't either. Again, I I just, it just stuck out, I just. Just wanted to ask. Um.
Thirty-five feet is pretty tall.
Yeah, it is.
It is.
It is, yeah, especially when it's built up on a ground there.
Yep.
Yeah. So I thought it was gonna be a church.
The reason I asked the question was, I was trying to figure out what the height of a structure is defined as. Uh, I know what it was in the shoreline zoning, but, uh. You talk about bringing in fill and stuff like that, it's. The the height measurement is measured from the main original grade. So you can't fill ten feet. And then put the structure on top of that and say, I'm thirty feet, when they're really forty feet under definition.
Gotcha. That's good, that's good to know, and that's in the minimum lot size ordinance that you just read from, so that's good for you.
It was kind of weird in a way that, maybe it's just, uh. Oh, minimum lot size ordinance, but the minimum lot size ordinance would have. Structure heights, whatever, or you think of it as, you know, what's the size of the lot?
Yeah.
So the house is, is entering.
Yeah, there's there's some construction there, I mean, there's, there's a structure.
That would be frame up is there.
At least.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, if if we will figure it out that it's thirty-six five, of what we can do a lot.
You tell me.
I don't know, I don't know, I don't know what.
It's it's against the ordinance, but what we can do is point. The he thinks his investment, it helps.
You don't know.
So we got two, what's the difference between two?
One has a paper, the other has.
A little word about that, right?
One's printed on one side of the page, you have two friends.
So it's same.
Yeah, and all, yeah, like a one's one, just one sided. Um, I can, you're a good, yeah, question, um, for everybody, uh, maybe I could view, um, the, uh. So, you know, in in preparing for tonight and trying to, trying to, you know. Anticipate what they may ask us regarding that solar development and the ordinance and stuff, so I was, you know, got the ordinance out and started looking at it. And, uh, and I, I was reminded that there, you know, a couple of things that. Um, need, need to be done, that in terms of implementing those changes, uh, that were adopted by the voters last November, uh. One would be to, uh, amend the application form. And the second would be to amend the findings of fact and law. And, and well, actually, there's a third, and it's not our responsibility, it's just like court's responsibility, and that is to, um. Um, come up with a, um. Uh, a permit fee.
Yeah.
Um. That's their responsibility, not ours, but, um, I I don't know if you've given any thought to how to proceed with that, or. You know, on one hand, you know, or. Realistically, are we ever gonna see an application, whether it's from them or or somebody else? I don't, I don't know.
I'm glad you brought it, that that's a good point. I thought about that earlier, when we first went down the shore, then I put it on the back.
Yeah, I did too, you know, so it's about, good to revisit that and and tackle those first two things, um.
So we want to, we want to run that up to the select board. And then their next meeting. Why will we, why they will, if they, for them to consider what they will reach at this kind of, um, application?
See, the.
Yeah, or or maybe mention it to Warner, um.
Yeah, that's a great starting point, just mentioning it to Laura, that the select board should be made aware that. Um, it would be their responsibility to come up with fees for these things.
I mean, I don't know that it's, I I I don't know how they said, you know, they had that responsibility for other. Permits, and I don't know how they go about it, I've never even seen it, by the way.
It'd be fair to ask. Yeah. But then the other two things in terms of revising the application fee, uh, the application. As well as the findings of fact, um, they're probably, I'm thinking a collective effort, uh, one evening, maybe, or. With us, and do it.
Yeah, um. Probably.
Yeah. Um. Cause we'd be inserting.
I mean, the hard, the, you know, the, in some respects, the hardest part might be finding the original. Of the, the master of the application, even how hard it is for the town office to find documents these days.
Maybe let's start there. Hans, do you think you could ask Mary if there is a. Um, original file, digital, that exists, that is the. Application for the commercial development review ordinance. And another file, that is, the findings of fact and conclusions of law, but the same thing.
That could be our starting point.
Yes, cause if we, if that answer is yes, what would they have to do is, um. Be able to revise that to include the solar stuff. The current two doctors that we have mirror the ordinance, which has now been revised. And we need to include those, the solar stuff.
Right, you're doing finding the facts and the original C D R application.
Yes.
Which, I'm sure there's a copy. Somewhere in the file cabinet, in my office. If you don't have a answer. You're welcome to come and do it anytime.
Why, thank you.
Well, I have to admit, this whole business of not being able to find the master. Of this ordinance is concerning.
Right.
I mean, it begs the question, how does the town? Manage its public records? And particularly the electronic versions of them. Um, maybe I don't want to know the answer to that question.
It's a rabbit hole.
So let's start where we decided to, so we can plan on some possible, or at least ask if they exist, so. Um, is there anything else we want to talk about? Then we're going to CEO updates and had those questions, thank you, it's administrative, we need to take care of that, any else? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
And seconded, any more discussion? No, all those in favor, so Sarah.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
Craig. Me too.
Bring it's a vote on this.
All in favor, none opposed, thank you. We paused, thank you.